Pledge, please.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Would the city clerk please conduct the roll call?
Yes, your honor, Councilman Todd Smith.
Here.
Councilman Jonathan Fabian.
Jonathan?
Councilman Rich Guard.
Here.
Councilman Eric Heiser.
Here.
Councilwoman Mary Ellen Christensen.
Present.
Councilman John Lars Baker.
Here.
Better see if you can get him to respond.
Jonathan?
Yes?
Would you like to respond to roll call?
Um, yes, I can't hear any from except for you, but I'm here.
Okay. Mayor Ron Warfins.
I'm present, thank you. Um, okay, I declare that we have a quorum this evening. Uh, approval of the agenda, the chair would entertain a motion for the approval of the agenda.
I'd move to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Been moved in second, is there discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Uh, agenda item number six is communication from the floor, citizens' comments. Anyone in the audience wishing to address the council regarding an item that is already on the agenda will be given an opportunity to speak later on. I would ask those individuals who wish to address the council at this time to approach the podium and identify yourself for the record. Is there anyone that would like to address the council this evening on any subject? Okay, apparently there is no one. Consent agenda, would the clerk please read the consent agenda items by title only?
Yes, your honor, approval of the minutes November 19th, 2013, regular council meeting, approval of the minutes December 3rd, 2013, finance committee meeting, approval of finance committee recommendations for December 3rd, 2013.
Your honor?
Yes.
It's the recommendation of the finance committee for the approval of claims to be paid in the amount of $158,331.22. Manual checks in the amount of $12,192.88. Checks written for payable liabilities for November 15th, 2013 in the amount of $231,841.37, for a total of $402,365.47.
Thank you. The chair would entertain a motion regarding the consent agenda?
I move we approve consent.
Second.
It's been moved in second, is there a discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion passes, mayor votes aye. Public defender appointment, city administrators' report.
Yes, your honor. Uh, the city of Riverton has been without a public defender since October 1st, 2013. The city advertised for this position and three, and received three applications. An interview panel consisting of Mr. Rick Sellers, our city attorney, Mrs. Courtney Bollander, administrative services director, and myself interviewed the candidates. On October, November 19th, the council authorized the mayor and city administrators start negotiating a contract with the top candidate. I met with Mrs. Gorseth and discussed provisions of the contract. Uh, the contract with Gorseth Law Offices is fairly standard. I'll point out a few of the items of the contract. The contract is effective December 1st and will remain in full force until terminated by either party. Um, she's anticipated in starting tomorrow, which is her first day of court, we have it on Wednesday. Gorseth's obligation under this contract or maintain her license to practice in the state of Wyoming. Attend all arraignment sessions scheduled to the Riverton Municipal Court. Attend all scheduled hearings and trials for cases that she has been assigned to represent, represent defendants charged with offenses in the Riverton Municipal Court and meet with defendants following arraignments. City agrees to pay Gorseth the sum of $2,000 per month. The mayor with the consent of council can terminate the contract in 30 days and Gorseth has the same option. Gorseth is an independent contractor and is not employee or agent of the city. Um, so recommending approval of the contract with Lori Gorseth Law Office, LLC, for public defender.
Thank you. Uh, the chair would entertain a motion regarding the public defender appointment?
Your honor, I'd move to approve Lori Gorseth and Gorseth Law Office LLC uh, to become the public defender for the city of Riverton.
Second.
It's been moved in second, is there discussion on this issue? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, mayor votes aye, motion carries. Uh, agenda item number nine, bid award, community entry services, selection of consultant for dementia Alzheimer's facility feasibility study. City clerks, report please.
I'll take that. Pursuant to the January 4th, 2013, regular council meeting, the governing body approved resolution number 1265, authorizing the mayor to submit a CDBG application on behalf of community entry services for a planning grant to perform a market analysis regarding a level two dementia facility. Public hearing soliciting public comment has been held. The grant has been awarded by CDBG and bids have been received. Three bids have been received on behalf of this grant award. Bids were opened in no particular order on November 21st, 2013, with the following bids. Howard &amp; Associates at $13,500, Community Builders Incorporated $19,348, and Wilson &amp; Company at $19,800. It is a recommendation of staff as well as the community entry services to award the bid to Howard &amp; Associates in the amount of $13,500. Um, there's, obviously this is, we're doing this as a courtesy for CES. Um, there's no contribution from the city on this behalf, only on staff time. So there's no, uh, any matching funds will be required of CES to pay for.
Okay. The chair would entertain a motion regarding this bid award?
Your honor, I would make the motion to award Howard &amp; Associates the bid for $13,500. Second.
Been moved in second, is there discussion?
Your honor.
Yes.
Uh, just one point I just wanted to make, uh, uh, it says level two. It'll be a level one also because you can't have a level two without a level one assisted living center. So, I just wanted to make.
Do you have any comments, Mr. Griffin, that you'd like to make, or? Okay, certainly, you bet, if you would come up to the microphone.
Everybody, I'm Sean Griffin, I'm the CEO of Community Entry Services. The only comments I have is, is we appreciate the city working with us over the years and us, you know, and specifically to this grant. It helps us help determine the level of need in our community and we want to approach it cautiously and that's why we're doing the feasibility study. You know, we're just trying to see if we can meet our community needs. We've been approached by, by different members of the community to see if it's something that we could offer. Um, and again, we want to approach it care, approach it carefully, um, and physically responsibly by making sure the needs out there before we pursue any further extension of the, of the project. And so this is just a start of that. We hope that it'll, it'll carry on further, but again, we want to thank the, you know, the council and Mr. Mayor and all the city staff for all the help they've given us over the years and in particular to this one. We're just trying to meet the community needs and hopefully expand some of the economic impact that we have in this area.
Thank you. Um, having had a mother that suffered from Alzheimer's and dementia for a number of years and ultimately passed away in a nursing home in the latter stages of it, I can speak personally that how, what the need is in the community. So, I'm very supportive of what you're doing and appreciate your efforts, Sean. Thank you.
Oh, you're welcome, thank you folks.
Okay, we have a motion in a second on the floor, uh, any other discussion? All those, um, approving the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries, mayor votes aye. Mountain View Water. Mountain View Water District Agreement, uh, city administrators' report.
Yes, your honor, on, on November 8th, 2011, ooh. Uh, the city council had a work session with Mountain View Water District to discuss the district getting city water without having to annex to the city. I didn't realize it'd been actually two years ago, that seems like it hasn't been that long ago, but. At the time, the council didn't want to force annexation unless the majority of the district desired to be annexed. At this time, they were not interested in being annexed. Uh, Mrs. Dawn Wilhelm, acting public services director, and I, along with Mr. Lauren Smith, president of the Mountain View Water District, negotiated this contract. Staff has taken the concerns of the council that was expressed in a more recent work session to try to incorporate them into this contract. Uh, just a little background on the Mountain View Water District. Um, currently, the Mountain View Water District provides 25 city residents within the district's surface area. The city of Riverton and Mountain View Acres cooperatively entered into agreement with Wyoming Water Development Commission in 2008 to study the alternatives to provide water to the southwest side of Riverton and Mountain View areas. From this study, the Riverton Water Supply Project expansion came about as well as alternatives for the district. In 2011, the Wyoming Development, Wyoming Water Development Commission turned down an application by the district for a new well in the area with the direction being given that the Wyoming Water Development Commission has already funded the city to bring water into close proximity of the district and the district should explore this option to secure a reliable water source. The district and the WWDC have come up with this project as an alternative to forced annexation. A contractual agreement needs to be entered in place that will memorialize the cooperation between the two entities prior to monies becoming available to the district for design and construction. This contract will supply water to Mountain View Acres subdivision only for emergency short term, with all water being purchased as standard out of city rates from the city of Riverton. Um, included in, in your packet, I've included both the red line version, which shows all the changes that we've made from the original one that you saw, as well as a clean copy for your reference. Um, staff has highlighted a few of the, of the changes, I guess, in the agreement. Uh, we've defined emergency as temporary, meaning 90 days catastrophic failure of district's well system. Under number six, it stated that the city has no responsibility downstream of the bulk master meter. Uh, the city will have a backflow device along with the meter and what happens downstream of the, of the meter is not the city's responsibility. In addition, several sentences have been taken out related to their system, which is not our responsibility. Uh, seven C, we will provide no more than 250,000 gallons per day subject to water availability in the city's rights contained in paragraph 15. Staff didn't want to be put in a situation where we're rationing water use, um, of our citizens, but still bound to provide water to the district. Uh, number 11 added a clause that after a certain period of time, 90 days, that they're using continuous water, that the city has an option to terminate the contract or require the district to initiate annexation to the city. Purpose of this agreement is emergency water, not long term. Uh, 12B talks about what can be used for the water, which is lawns and garden. Um, is not, not allowed, it's, it's used for domestic use. And number 13, we made changes to reflect the water rates the district will be charged and how they'll be billed and can coincide with how we bill in, at the city. Uh, this agreement will only take effect after we get the water line built, which could be years down the road. Mountain View Water District is required to get the agreement into place before they can apply for the funding with the Wyoming Water Development Commission. Uh, the district will pay for everything related to getting the system set up for the emergency water. Uh, there will be some staff costs involved of reviewing and making sure they meet city specifications. And the district will be charged a minimum water meter charge, even if they don't use any water consistent with how we charge our residents. Um, and if there's any questions, uh, Mr. Lawrence Smith's here from the district, answer any questions on his side and, uh, we're recommending approval of this contract.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Reader. Uh, the chair would entertain a motion regarding the Mountain View Water District Agreement as presented?
I would move to approve the agreement as presented.
Second.
It's been moved in second, is there a discussion? Anyone have any?
Your honor?
Yes, Councilman Baker.
Well, I, maybe a question, I'm, um, where are we on the project of actually putting the water line down that direction? In other words, I mean, I guess the feeling that I have here is that we're, is that we're going into an agreement for a water line that doesn't exist.
Yeah. And your honor, that's, that's correct in the fact that we don't, right now, we're in the process of trying to get with the tribes to actually get an easement across the property to get it down there. And so, um, that's part of our whole system of this Riverton Water Supply Project, but yeah, we don't, we haven't even started that portion. So, uh, but it's our intention to eventually do that. Um, but they have to get that into place so that they can actually apply for the funding to get the money to put it in when, if it ever came down there.
Is there advantages to doing it now as opposed to doing it later on either side of the equation?
Well.
Advantages to us to do it now for?
Yeah, your honor, I, I asked that question of, of Lauren and he said, in order to apply for the funding, they needed to have the agreement in place.
Okay, that's what I was wondering.
And that was the main reason.
Okay, thank you. Can you state your name for the record?
Lauren Smith. Yeah, mayor and council, uh, water development has indicated to us that we need to have this agreement in place so that, our funding has been approved by the, uh, Water Development Commission last May, but before the, any funds could ever be freed up for design or anything like that, uh, this needs to be, this is the last piece of the puzzle really for subdivision.
That's, that's what I was wondering if there, that wasn't part of the linkage there? Okay.
Your honor?
Yes, Councilman Guard.
The.
Your honor?
The project isn't even listed on, um, the capital improvements for the water fund. So, we're years away.
Yeah, we are years away.
Thank you. Nick Jonathan, I had a question.
Did you have a question, Jonathan?
Yes, um, can we do a roll call vote because I have quite a delay?
Yeah, I can hear that.
Yeah, there is quite a delay, Jonathan. Uh, we certainly can have a roll call vote, uh, when we approve this, I suppose. Is that what you're requesting?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah. Where, where are you at?
I think it's a cellphone connection that we're having technical difficulties with for some reason. I know Heiser has called in before. He just text, he can only hear through the TV. So we might have to repeat a question if he, if he prefers to vote.
Okay.
In order for him to know what he's voting on.
Okay, are, is there any other discussion on this, um, um, agreement? One question I had somewhere in the body of it and I was looking for it and I haven't found it, but it was one of the 90-day, um, time periods there. Um, when it, a problem is identified or something and they have 90 days to correct it. And that seemed to me like an awfully long time to let a known problem go. Um, you know?
But, your honor, I, the only, unless I'm thinking of another one, the 90 days, I think, is the, if they use continuous water, meaning if their system went down for a period of 90 days where they couldn't get it up and weren't running, or they figured out it wasn't going to work. That's the point where they'd have to start the annexation process or we, or we could terminate the contract. Is there another one, Lauren?
And I think that one I didn't have a problem with, but it just seemed like if, if there was uh, some feature in their water system that we identified was, um.
The only other one is right in the very first paragraph that talks about a temporary water, city on an emergency basis, i.e. temporary 90 days catastrophic failure of district well service to serve its water users.
Your honor?
Yes, Councilman Guard.
Do we have any problems of, if this is down the road obligating them, another council to that requirement?
City attorney?
Councilman Guard, I don't believe that that would be, um, obligating them. You're signing the, or you're approving and signing the agreement now. When they get their water system in, then it's a continuing obligation of the city. Um, just like any other water use outside the city where you sign agreements, whether they're annexation or otherwise.
Thank you.
Okay, is there any other discussion? Okay, we have a, um, motion on the floor to approve the, um, Mountain View Water District Agreement and a request by Councilman Fabian to have a roll call vote. Um, and so, Councilman Baker, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Heiser?
Yes.
Councilman Carden?
Yes, your honor. Yes.
Councilman Fabian, how do you vote? Okay, and the mayor votes yes, so the motion is approved. Thank you. Okay, ordinance number 13 dash 011, first reading, door-to-door solicitation. Uh, the chair would entertain a motion to remove this item from the table.
Uh, your honor, I move that, I move that we remove the, uh, item from the table so that we can discuss, uh, ordinance 13 dash 011.
Second.
It's been moved in second, it, um, is there discussion? All in favor of removing this item from the table and bringing it up for discussion at this time? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And those opposed, motion carries. Uh, would the city clerk please read ordinance number 13 dash 011 by title only?
Yes, your honor, proposed ordinance number 13 dash 011 on first reading and ordinance amending title five, business licenses and regulations of the Riverton Municipal Code for the city of Riverton, adding chapter 5.28, door-to-door solicitation, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. Uh, there was a motion in a second on the table from the last regularly scheduled meeting to approve ordinance number 13 dash 011 on first reading. Uh, when the item was tabled, we were in the middle of the discussion phase and will now continue with the discussion before voting on the motion. Okay, is there further discussion on this, um, item?
Your honor?
Yes, Councilman Smith?
I'll start the discussion tonight, I guess. Um, the mayor, last week, he and I had a nice discussion, um, about this, um, ordinance. Uh, he asked me to visit him at his office, we had a nice meeting. Uh, after the last meeting, um, it was brought to his attention, uh, someone brought to his attention that perhaps I would have a conflict of interest in voting on this particular item, um, because of business in town. Um, and just to, I guess, get out before the public that I don't do door-to-door sales. Um, I don't knock on doors to ask people if I can mow their lawns. Um, in seven years of business, we have sporadically used door hangers, but have never knocked on doors. Um, I feel like I've got about as much conflict of interest as a council member voting on a utility increase because they receive a water bill. Um, so I will stay involved in the discussion and the vote on this. Um, I guess my preference, and I appreciated the mayor's conversation with me, but I would have appreciated if someone thought I had a conflict of interest to come talk to me personally as opposed to go through third-party channels and discuss the issue. That would have been a more polite and proper way to bring that up. Um, my issue with the ordinance, um, two problems I have with it and I guess I'll just give you two brief reasons why I'll be voting against it. Um, and I appreciate our, our city attorney going to the extra work for us to clear up the issues we were having at the last meeting with the legalities. Um, as I look on page 27 with the, the email that talks about the four-part test, um, that determines the validity of the ordinance, um, I don't think we pass that test with the ordinance we have. Um, number two says, is the government interest substantial? Um, the interest that we had in developing an ordinance, um, was to try to track or keep track of who from out of town was coming into our community and, um, to have a way to know who those people were so if we got complaints, we could follow up with them. Um, so we had an interest. I don't know if that's substantial because number four, is the regulation more extensive than is necessary to serve that interest? Well, it is. Um, we found out constitutionally, we cannot exempt it to just out-of-town salespeople. And so it is more extensive than the interest we had in drawing up the ordinance, so I don't think it matches that test. And the second reason, um, when you read on the next page in 28 under A, um, the problem with this involving not only in county and out of county is under A, any person conducting commercial sales that includes visiting residences within the city without prior invitation must have a city-issued permit. I think it just cast this net too wide. Here we had a little issue we were trying to deal with. Now we've made this huge governmental red tape that everyone has to go into. And now, I had a gentleman at my house last week who said, you know, last winter, I went and knocked on doors asking people if I could shovel their driveways to make a little extra money for my family. That person under this ordinance would now have to get a permit from the city of Riverton to do that. We had a lot of folks working to clean up our communities and when the tree limbs fell this fall, a lot of those folks were helping other people out. Others were trying to make a few extra dollars for their family and they were knocking on doors, trying to help out. And that's going to blanket those people as well. Uh, the young kids that want to sell something door-to-door and be an entrepreneur, it's going to affect them if it's a commercial sale and they're making money. If they want to mow lawns at 14 and they knock on a door, they're going to have to have a permit from the city of Riverton. So I don't think this is a good ordinance for our city. I think it goes way beyond, uh, what we intended in trying to find out who are the outsiders coming in, um, so I'll be voting against it tonight.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other comments?
Your honor?
Yes. Christensen?
Number one, these four, uh, these four parts that ordinance have to, uh, meet, I just wonder if all our ordinances meet these four. Uh, that was one thing when I read these, I went, wait a minute, I, I bet you we could go through the ordinance book and, and, or does that only have to do with door-to-door? Uh, Rick?
Mr. Mayor, um, those four parts are set up because of you're potentially setting a regulation on interstate or, yeah, interstate commerce. And so. on interstate, or, yeah, interstate commerce. And so it's under the commerce clause that that four-part test has to be met, not all ordinances.
Okay.
If I could also respond to Councilman Smith, the way the ordinance is written currently, and one suggestion passes on first reading that I would have for second, is to define a commercial sale. There's a case out of Fort Collins that has a definition that says, "soliciting orders for the sale of goods, wares, merchandise, books, pictures, and very honorable, or for the sale of such goods from stock." There are examples of somebody going to mow lawn or going to do scum sidewalks. You're not offering goods for sale. What you're doing is you're offering to perform a service for that person. So I don't believe that if we set out this definition of commercial sales, that it would cover those particular persons who are selling a service. Additionally, I think that, you know, the initial goal may have been to regulate who's coming into the community and going door-to-door and have some information on them. Just because you also have that information on people who you now know are also going door-to-door, would not make the ordinance overbroad or invalid.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other?
Can I finish?
Certainly.
You bet. Some of the, well, one of the surveys I did, the packet that we had originally, all that information from the collective from the state of Wyoming, all the nonprofits, churches, schoolkids, it seemed that they were exempt. When I called the National Association for Door-to-Door Sales, they said that there was an exemption for all those across the country, is the way he phrased it to me. I don't have that information because I don't have a fax, or, obviously, my email is not working tonight. So, but he did say that that was a recent congressional decision, that nonprofits are exempt. Green River, Wyoming, that's the reason they changed their ordinance. Most of these towns and cities, and, most of them are in Wyoming, and I called about 15 of them, they are exempt. So I think that is kind of null and void. I think it has to do with public safety. That was my first thought when I brought this forward, public safety, and just the right to feel safe. We had the gal here that did this for years. I mean, she stated that it's a dangerous profession with maybe some people that we don't want to come on our property. And I think we have the right to know, as a city. The other issue I wanted to point out, the permitting process. I guess if we don't want to give out-of-towners permits, then the local business people in town are going to be real happy because we have a lot of people, we get permits, they have to get permits before doing business. I mean, there's a lot of them, when you go through that, our ordinance book. So I don't know if that's an issue. I mean, they're already doing it. We charge our local people a lot of money for those permits, every year and every job, on a lot of them. So I just think there's a lot of complaints that come into the city, to the police department, and I just think we ought to address it. I personally have sat at a few desks when they're in town, and every phone call that those people receive are about door-to-door sales and their complaints. But the chief has left kind of with his hands tied because there's no repercussion. He can't do anything about it. So that was my purpose behind this. I still hope we vote for this. I think it's, we have a lot of folks in this town that maybe can't combat some of that aggressive sales tactics. It's tough. And I do hope it passes on the first reading.
Okay. Any other comments?
Your Honor?
Councilman Gard?
I don't, my concern is that the citizens have to post their property with a no-solicitation sign. And without that, it's, everything that we're doing here is of non-help. And so I think what we really should do is change our, change our position from this ordinance and go back to an ordinance that allows you to poster a non-solicitation sign on your property, and then put a fee for knocking on that door that we, that the chief can use. And the problem right now with this ordinance is if you do not go out and post your property with a non-solicitation sign, we haven't helped the issue. But if we do go back and say, this is our new ordinance that we're going to have, is you had to have, if you post your property, but you do not want to have solicitation take place there, then the consequences are this fee. Now we have helped. You can actually call into the city and say, I have somebody at my door, they want to sell me steel siding. If my house is posted, would you please come inform them of the situation they put themselves in? Now we have some teeth that we can do something with. I don't know if the fine needs to be $750,000. $750,000 would be a lot of money. $750,000, I think, is the maximum, is it not? And I suppose you could start with a lower fee. That was actually $200, and then another offense, you could raise that fee. But the reality of it is, if people don't understand they have to go out and buy a sign and post it on their property, and post that their property is non-solicitation, then the ordinance that we're talking about is absolutely no help, and does not do anything for them. And so that's why I will be voting against it. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments?
Your Honor?
Yes, Councilman Christiansen?
I just want to clarify, on the ordinance on H, don't we have to, it states they have to post their property.
Yeah, it has to be posted.
Yeah. So I think it's already in there.
And I don't, Councilman Baker, did you have anything?
Your Honor, as I read that, that's, see, that's what I've been trying to figure out as I listen to the discussion here. But it seems to me like there's another element to the prohibited activity, and that's for door-to-door salesmen to be rude, or pushy, or act crummy. And so under those circumstances, it would be possible, if there was a complaint filed against that individual, to revoke his permit. And then he wouldn't be able to move inside the city. And I guess, kind of along with that, then you think about permits. So, Councilman Smith, do you have a permit, a city business permit, to mow lawns?
No.
Is that, so what is necessary to get a city business license?
Your Honor, we don't have a city business license per se for any business.
I see.
For certain activities, taxi cab, you know, we have certain things that people have to sign up for.
I see, okay.
Tree trimming.
Yeah, okay. Well, that's what I've seen those come across, but I wasn't sure of all the categories that we might, okay, I see. All right. So, in the definition of a, of a, of a commercial sale to a homeowner that is selling, or that's buying popcorn from the Boy Scouts, okay, that's still, looks to me like a commercial transaction. You've paid money and you got a product back. You know, the only way you can tell the difference is that, is that the guy's got on a Boy Scout uniform, and you assume that the money's going to be used for some kind of Boy Scout purposes, as opposed to the individual. But to the landowner, isn't that, or to the homeowner, that transaction's identical to a commercial sale for another product?
Yeah, and I think that it's under the exemption of charitable or nonprofit. I understand from the homeowner's perspective that they seem the same, but the underlying goal of one is to make money from selling your products for private purpose, whereas the other one is for a charitable or profit purpose. We're exempting them under it. I think part of that is traditionally those people, or local, or, ladies, gentlemen, anywhere.
Thank you. Your Honor, the only other, the question that I had two weeks ago, and we were talking about this, was whether or not we could in fact exempt nonprofits. I guess that was my concern, that was unclear as to whether or not, whether or not the net swept so wide that we could just strictly limit it to commercial sales. I guess that was my concern. I know that's what we said we want to do. I was just not sure that that was, in fact, something that we could do. So, can we do that? We can do that. Okay.
Another observation that I would like to make, if you have a door-to-door salesman that comes to your home and is aggressive, or abusive, or using tactics that are inappropriate, I wouldn't think that you would need to have a no-solicitation sign in order to bring action against them. Okay? If they're abusing that privilege of solicitation in our community. And the way it is right now, it's my understanding that we really don't have much on the books for the chief to hang his hat on in that area. And so I personally feel that, you know, the getting a no-solicitation sign for your home is not a great burden. I don't think you have to go out and buy one. I think if you want to get a piece of cardboard and scribble on it, "no salesman" or "no solicitors," you know, it'd probably meet that test. But to me, it just doesn't make sense, you know, in our community, to not know who is in our community and what they're doing here, if they're commercially selling things in our community. And so I just am going to be supporting it this evening, and at least passing it on the first reading. If we kill it this evening, well, then it goes away entirely, is my understanding. And so I would like to continue this discussion after a couple weeks, reading it a little closer and thinking about it a little more. And then we can, if we choose on the second or third reading to not move in that direction, well, then that would, if that's the will of the council, then I wouldn't have a problem with it. But I personally think that it has merit. I think that we do need, for the protection, especially of our older citizens, to have a little bit of protection on the books. The way it is now, we don't have anything, is my understanding. And so I don't think what we're trying to do is unreasonable. It does provide a little bit of regulation, you know, and I know there, we get into places that we're just opposed to any kind of regulation, but, boy, without regulation, well, you have anarchy. And that's not a road I want to go down either, so. At any rate, Councilman Heiser, you've been very quiet this evening.
Just been taking it all in.
Okay.
I, I can, I certainly can see where Councilman Smith and Councilman Gard are coming from. And I also see the other side as well. I guess, for me, H and I pretty much sum things up. And obviously, you're going to have to keep in the language about the permit, but removing the commercial part or anything like that. H reads, "commercial door-to-door sales may not be conducted at homes where a clearly posted sign declares no solicitation." And then I says, "any salesperson who is rude, insolent, violent, or overly aggressive, or who solicits at home, clearly posted no soliciting or no solicitation." And if you don't want to do the permit thing, you could just say, "may be cited with a misdemeanor punishable by a fine of up to $750." And then at least you've got something on the books that the chief can use to prosecute those that are not following the rules. And maybe, as Councilman Smith points out, be a lot less onerous on those that are attempting to go door-to-door. I just wonder if, I agree with the wide net that we're throwing out there, or the using the sledgehammer to kill an ant theory. So that's kind of where I'm at. I, like I said, I'd be, I'd be in favor of having something, and that's mainly just because I've heard the stories. And I'd like the chief to have some ability to say, you know, you know what, this is real simple. You violated this statute in city code, and you're going to be fined, period. Rather than, well, we might be able to get you for trespass, or we might be able to get you for harassment. No, you violated this clearly in this section right here, and it's done. So I think that's probably the way that I'm leaning tonight.
Okay. Councilman Fabian, do you have any comments?
I guess the thing that I, that I hear is I don't really like imposing these regulations on our local citizens. However, it is obvious that we don't have the constitutional right to impose it only on people coming in, the city. And so, for me, it's kind of a tough spot at that point, because, you know, I don't, I don't want to impose this on a local business person at all. And, yeah, I'm kind of with Eric on this one. I feel like, I feel like, you know, if we just pare this thing down, and basically, you know, kind of, and put a fine in place for who, I guess, breached, you know, who are rude, or insolent, or violent, et cetera, et cetera, then I think we have done a good service to our citizens in doing that, without putting the city at risk for some sort of lawsuit by imposing a regulation on them, and not all.
Okay, thank you.
Your Honor?
Yes, Councilman Christiansen?
I've got a question for the chief. Sorry, or Rick. So if we, if we changed H and, well, I, for the penalty, so if we just gave that fine versus revoking the permit so they couldn't sell at all, I mean, the fining process, do they have to go to court? Do they, do you collect that fine right then? So the thing I'm worried about is if we have some unseemly guy selling something, and you stop him and you give him this ticket, is it going to do any good? I mean, is he going to go to court? Are we going to do all this paperwork? Are we going to do all, every, the police officer, their paperwork, et cetera, et cetera? Where, I'm wondering if we could, if we take away their permit, you're out of town, kind of thing. But I don't know if that makes any more difference. Will they leave town? I don't know.
What the process would be is the police officer, upon a complaint, would issue a citation to the person, but the homeowner's citing as the plaintiff, and then appear at municipal court. The maximum fine, which wouldn't necessarily be the fine for a first offense.
Sure.
But it could be up to $750 and/or six months in jail. And so, repeat offenders that are cited, obviously, would have more severe punishment, or then set a minimum bond that would be the fine on the first offense. But they would have to go, you know, they would have to go to municipal court. If they pled not guilty, they'd be entitled to trial, and the homeowner would have to come in and testify as to the behavior.
Sure. I was just worried that the gal that came and talked to us, that, I mean, they're leaving town, or, you know, they're just out of here. So we've done a lot of work for somebody to, I don't know which is better, just to revoke the, keep it the way it is, or fine them?
Either you fine them, and they leave, or if you revoke them, it's the same.
Okay, and they leave. I just don't want the officers to do a lot of work, and the city staff, and for somebody to leave town.
Well, I think the chief would agree with me. I mean, that's the officer's job, is to enforce the laws of the state and the city.
Okay.
And they get complaints, they investigate them, and issue citations where appropriate.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Your Honor?
Yes, Councilman Smith?
Is it possible to make a motion to amend the motion that's on the floor with the language, and amend the language at this time? Or do we have to vote up and down on this?
What I'm thinking might be the best way, I think, that Stephen has probably received some direction on the... some direction on the two offending paragraphs that we might want to tweak a little bit. And then, perhaps at the next meeting, we could bring in alternate to the council. And then, we could vote this one up or down at this time. Would that be the best way to go, Stephen, or do you think?
Well, Your Honor, I think you can amend the motion, and you could strike out all this other if you wanted to, and just have H and I as a part of that. I think that's doable instead of, if you don't feel comfortable in passing a first reading, coming back and cleaning it up, either or.
Your Honor?
Councilman Guard.
I still think that we have to go back to the fact to educate our citizens that they had to post their property correctly, with the way they want it posted. I may be remiss, and the chief could fix this for me, but if somebody gets in my house and I ask them to leave, I can pick up the phone and you have recourse, do you not?
Yes, sir. In that event, clearly, we would have a trespass charge. The issue we have dealt with, and one of the reasons we're trying to, you know, address that with an ordinance, is that the people who are most vulnerable to those kinds of sales tactics are not the kind of people who take an affirmative stance against someone and order them out of their house. And that's the issue. A person who's affirmative like that doesn't have need of the police. They don't have a need to file a complaint. It's the person who sort of gets, you know, walked all over that is not affirmative enough to declare that, "Get out of my house," or "Get off my property," that would lead to an effective trespassing charge.
And see, that goes to the center of my point, that you have to post your property. And if you're not going to post your property, then we haven't helped anybody with either one of these ordinances. And so, we would be better to wash this ordinance out and vote it down, come right back with another ordinance that puts a fine on for someone that goes past a no solicitation sign. And then, if you truly do need to sleep during the day, or don't want felons getting in your house, which I don't believe is every salesman, but if you are of that nature, you can post your house. But you still have to take care of your own front door. You still have to look out the door, and we need to get that information out also, that you shouldn't open your door if you don't have the fortitude to shut the door. And that would be a much better piece of information that we send out, other than give people an idea that we have passed a non-solicitation rule that they don't have to do something about. They don't post a sign, we can't help them at all. And if they're non-aggressive type people, they're not going to post that sign, is my contention. And so, I think that we do need the ordinance for someone that is aggressive and belligerent, but I believe the police force is also there to help that. We get that information out, all the individual has to do is walk to their phone, call the police, that door-to-door salesman is out the door. And that's just common sense. And so, you know, we're, like Eric said, we're using the sledgehammer on an ant. Thank you, Your Honor.
Your Honor?
Thank you, Councilman Guard.
I think I got direction from Stephen that I could make an amendment. So, I'd like to make a motion to amend the ordinance 13-001 to read as follows. A, "Commercial door-to-door sales may not be conducted at homes where a clearly posted sign declares no solicitation." B, "Any salesperson who is rude, insolent, violent, or overly aggressive, or who solicits at a home clearly posted no soliciting or no solicitation will be subject to penalties." C, and this goes back to letter G, "Penalties are established in City Ordinance 1.20.010", which in that ordinance that I looked up says that's a $750 fine. And no other language. Just those three points.
I'll second that.
Chief?
Your Honor, Council, I guess I would just ask you to think real hard about the language that Councilman Smith presented, only from the fact that as the ordinance is currently presented, the penalty for being rude is to have your permit pulled. Now, we're talking about a criminal penalty for being rude. And personally, I wouldn't enforce that, and I wouldn't have my officers enforce that. Rude obviously is open to some interpretation. When the penalty is, "Hey, you're being rude to people, we don't want you conducting sales in our town," that's one thing. When it's, "Hey, you're going to face a fine because you were rude or overly aggressive," I'm very uncomfortable with that. So, I would hope that you would take that into consideration as you're discussing that.
Yes.
So, your objection, the reason for your motion here is to eliminate the permitting process? You don't like the permitting process and the fees that are associated with it?
Correct. So, it only deals with those, well, to limit it only to those who post their house no solicitation. That's what we're dealing with. The person who doesn't want commercial sales at their home can put a sign up. If you violate and knock on a door that has a sign up, then you should be subject to some penalty. And I'd be amenable to any other kind of penalty. I just know that language was in there was the only reason I picked that out of there. But the issue shouldn't be, you know, goes back to that thing of blanketing. And here's the deal with the permitting thing for me. You know, only the honest people that come into town are going to get a permit. The felons, the guys that are running a shady deal, they're going to knock on as many doors as possible till they're run out of town. So, you're going to catch the honest people who live here with permits. You're going to catch the honest guy from out of town who's trying to make a living with a permit. Most businesses from out of town, I don't go into a town and look up city ordinances, they're probably not going to look up whether we have one or not. So, really, we're dealing with the people that don't want anyone to knock on their door for commercial sales. So, if we can develop a way to say, "Don't knock on my door, don't try to sell me something," and protect that person who doesn't want that, I think that gets at the heart of trying to solve the issue that's leading to complaints, rather than making everyone else jump through a bunch of red tape and all these other hoops. So, that's why I would streamline, I guess.
The concern I have about this is that the way you described it does not let the city know who is in our community selling. We have no permit. Okay? And so, it's only by virtue of the fact of they're getting a permit that you can assume that if they're at your door and have a city permit, that they are good people from out of town by your own suggestion. If only the people that are bad people will be coming and left, it doesn't make sense to me. And that's the strength, I think, of having the permit is so that we know who's in our community, so that we do run into problems, then we can take action against them and their organization, the company that they work for, on and on and on. But just to say, "No, we're not going to keep track of it," then I think we may as well just back up to where we are right now and just leave it up to the individual homeowner to just put no solicitation on their home and be done with it. But that's, once again, my personal.
Your Honor?
Yes.
Can I have the chief repeat that, what you were talking about, just so I understand it, in regards to Councilman Smith's new verbiage?
Yes, ma'am, and mayor. As I understood Councilman Smith's, what he put forward, one of it was to take what's currently listed as I, that talks about the rude or insolent or overly aggressive person. The penalty for that in the current draft is to have your permit taken away, right? And then, if they continue to sell after that, they would be subject to criminal penalties. There's also a due process built into that, that if their permit was revoked, they could come to you as a council and ask to have it reinstated. Under what I understood, Councilman Smith's draft to be, it would be that that would change into a criminal penalty for rude, insolent, or overly aggressive behavior. And I'm very leery of trying to enforce something that vague with that kind of a penalty, if that makes sense. So, it's one thing, I think, to revoke a permit, it's another thing to charge someone with a crime. The issue would be that someone from out of town who's charged with a crime is probably going to have to post a bond, which means they're going to be arrested. So, if a person from, you know, Houston or Cleveland is in town selling, it doesn't do us much good to write them a citation, and then they disappear out of town, they would probably be arrested and forced to post a bond. And that's a pretty stiff penalty for something that we would have to argue in court, what really is rude or not rude behavior. So, I'm a little bit leery of that.
I think we have a motion in a second at this time with, maybe you could read back what the changes or the amendments were. Gordon.
Yes, yes. I believe the motion by Councilman Smith was to include, to exclude A, B, C, D, E, F out of the current ordinance as drafted now. And that would leave items G, H, and a revision of I to the second reading, for the second reading, or for the first reading, I'm sorry.
And a revision of G, the first sentence, with the permit.
Okay.
And we have a motion in a second on the floor. All those in favor of the amendment signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed?
No.
No. Did I hear Councilman Fabian vote no?
Yes, they voted no.
Okay. So, we're back to square one.
We're back to the original motion.
I'm sorry?
Back to the original motion.
Your Honor?
Yes.
Chief, isn't it going to be, you know, when I get picked up for speeding, I was never speeding, right? Isn't that my case, that I wasn't speeding? You must, your instruments must be wrong. And so, isn't it going to be difficult to tell rude, obnoxious behavior, no matter if you're the police or the court? Am I right in that aspect?
Your Honor, I would agree that that's open to interpretation. Again, the, one of the stated purposes of this ordinance was that it would give us some way to control the rude or overly aggressive person. You know, that is a difficult thing to legislate, and that's why the penalty for that is simply removal of the license that they could either not continue to sell that way or at all, or come and appeal to you all about getting their permit back.
And with that said, if I'm not an up-and-up businessman, if I come into town, do I give you all my best information where my wife and children live, and I'm a felon, do I always, if I'm trying to do a shady deal, am I going to fill out that application so good that you're able to track me and know where I'm at? What would you do?
Well, Your Honor, not implying that you're a felon. I think, yeah, I think that, you know, there's no way to legislate out fraudulent behavior. I mean, people, if they're that willing to create fraud, they're probably going to commit a fraud. The issue for me, I guess, as we bring this forward, is that a lot of the kinds of crimes I'm concerned about these folks committing are anonymous crimes, right? The lone burglar who is in a neighborhood that's not inhabited during the daytime, and they only commit that crime because, number one, the opportunity's there, and number two, their chance of detection is so small because they're anonymous. The simple fact of having to come in and show identification to obtain a permit, I hope would take away a little bit of that anonymity and therefore provide some level of protection by not, you know, letting that person wander anonymously through town.
And then, am I to suppose that a city employee, not a police officer, is now going to be the go-between, between the salesman said, "I didn't say anything rude or insulting or obnoxious," and the homeowner saying, "Well, yeah, this is how that happened, and so you need to pull his permit." So, we're just going to go off of the homeowner's description of that, and the city employee's going to be caught in between those two conversations of what truly happened and what didn't happen?
Well, Your Honor and Council, I really don't know that that's any different than the way we conduct business in any other event. Typically, unless a police officer witnesses some event, particularly in a misdemeanor crime, it requires an affidavit to be filed by the person who's the victim of that crime. And then, of course, the arbiter of that is the judge, is the appropriate person. And so, that's really not much different than how business is conducted in the police department, day in and day out for any kind of violation. If a person says, you know, "This person used fighting words and tried to provoke me to a fight in the street," that would be a violation of disorderly conduct, and we would have to use that person's statement as the evidence against the other person, and then have it go to court to be resolved.
With that thought, with one of our city clerks or even a department head having to be in between that discussion of, "What did you say? What did you say?" Do you think that's a good position to put a city employee to be making the determination on pulling a permit?
Well, Councilman, as it's written, though, that would be a sworn officer who would do that. That's who we expect to do that currently in any situation, is that a sworn officer is the one who has to be that go-between person. So, the permit would re-revoke by a police officer, not by another citizen. And how this would probably work in practice, and again, every situation has its own dynamics, depending on how aggressive someone would be, but typically, how I would see this playing out is that a homeowner would call and say, "Hey, this guy was really pushy, he was really aggressive." The officer would contact that person and say, "Hey, here's what our ordinance says. Mind your Ps and Qs, or we're going to revoke your permit." It wouldn't be until they were called back to deal with that person for that same kind of behavior that their permit would be revoked. And then, you would have two sets of witnesses who could come and testify as to how that person acted. That's probably how it would act in practical terms.
And they would have to both have the premises posted for non-soliciting to make that work?
No, as the ordinance is currently proposed, no. That's a separate subsection that would provide additional protection for the person who took that affirmative step and posted their property as no solicitation. But anybody could be protected by the, you know, the subsection that talks about rude, insolent, or aggressive behavior. So, two, really, two separate ways of addressing that issue.
Another side of this issue that I've been approached by different people in the community is that we have a lot of businesses on our main streets and in our business part of town that have a lot of money invested in their storefront properties and whatnot. And for us to not have anything on the books that allows out-of-town businesses come in with no storefront, no investment in our community at all, and sell door-to-door to our citizens in potentially aggressive manners and whatnot, is, sets up a little bit of heartburn, you know, with people that have invested a lot in our community. So, there's that aspect of it as well that we haven't addressed this evening. So, it just seems to me like it would be appropriate for us to have something on the books for our citizens and for the chief, and that's what this ordinance is attempting to do. And so, let's go ahead and have the vote on first reading, and if we choose to vote it down, why, we won't have to worry about it in the future. And if we do choose to pass it, then we can have more discussion at our next meeting. So, all those in favor of ordinance, which ordinance is that, 13-011, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. And opposed?
No.
No.
Okay. And Councilman Fabian? Okay. So, the motion carries on the first reading. Okay, agenda item number 12, concurrence with YDOT bid award for South Federal and Monroe Project, Acting Public Services Director, report please.
Your Honor, I'm going to take the first part, and everyone else will be chiming in throughout this. The city of Riverton entered an agreement with YDOT in March of 2012 to participate in the reconstruction of South Federal and Monroe. City staff worked with YDOT and a consultant to assure that the water and sewer utilities would be reconstructed as part of the project, as well as lighting improvements that are consistent with the decorative lighting at City Park and Main Street. The city executed three agreements with YDOT for this project. The first, ARS-CT agreement, total cost of $1,98,722, stipulated that the city would be responsible for the costs incurred for replacing the water and sanitary sewer improvements. The CSA agreement stipulated that YDOT would pay for installation of seven decorative lighting poles, with the city being responsible for maintenance. STPE agreement, total of $656,328, stipulated that the city would be responsible for STPE agreement, total of $656,328, stipulated that the city would be responsible for 9.51%. $154,532, which I've sent out some updated numbers, and that's, that's down to, uh, 46,615 of the cost to install the rest of the decorative lighting, seventeen as well as the maintenance of these poles. At a later date, when the hydraulic report came out, another ARSC-T agreement, total cost of $986,334, was entered in regarding storm sewer. This agreement stipulated the city responsible for 75% of the cost of the storm sewer system. I, we sent out an, uh, spreadsheet to you today that you should have on your computers, and if you don't have that, we put copies in front of you. The reason why we put everything on here is, um, sometimes it's hard to focus on just one project, you've gotta see the, the scope of all of our capital projects. So the, this sheet shows the general fund, capital projects, economic development, water fund, sewer, sanitation, and airport. These are all the ones that we had currently budgeted for. It also includes the additional monies needed for South Federal in regards to the lighting, storm drain, water, and sewer. Since the original staff report, we received an updated exhibit from YDOT that shows our portion for the lighting. YDOT had not included their obligation per contract to pay for the seven lights. The new number is 46,615. We originally needed 663,520 overall between all of them, and now that's down to 555,603. The extra money that we needed for this project was made up by a variety of changes, and you can see those on this progress plan, um, under the comments. First, in the comments column, you'll see staff recommends appropriating certain projects in fiscal year fifteen. These projects are necessary, but not a priority due to our cash flow. So all the ones that you see appropriate in fiscal fifteen are ones we're not planning to do this year, that can be used to cover the over expenditures, um, to make up the, the difference that we need. The second is some projects came in under budget, which gives us some extra money to apply to this project. For instance, we budgeted $425,000 for a new sewer jet truck. We're going to have $41,464 remaining of that that we can apply to this. So the bottom line is we are short $25,615 in lights, because we had already budgeted $21,000 for, for lighting per agreement with YDOT. We are short $120,000 in the general fund for storm drainage, and only $21,397 in sanitary sewer. The water fund, CIP, has absorbed the increased costs due to the same reason, shifting projects to another fiscal year and current projects coming in under budget. We are proposing that the storm and sewer be covered under the 1% money. The lighting will occur in, in the next fiscal year budget, so with some analysis in our projected revenues, we will be able to prioritize the appropriate funding source for this project, for this portion of the project. And so, we believe that, um, we're able to accomplish this task, and we would, uh, make the recommendation that we concur with the YDOT bid to, uh, approve these projects.
Okay. Thank you, Stephen. Is there any other staff that wants to comment at this time, or? Okay. The Chair would entertain a motion to, um, concur with the YDOT bid award for South Federal and Monroe Projects?
Your Honor, I would, uh, make a motion to concur with the YDOT bid award as presented this evening.
Second.
It's been moved in second, it is your discussion.
Yes, Your Honor.
Councilman Gard.
Can I have a current, um, correct number on how much money out of the general fund we've spent for lights? Opposed, and what we've already spent? Is it 67,615?
Well, we have, it's 46,616 in lighting was, was the over, what we were required to pay. We'd already budgeted $21,000 as a part of these numbers.
Has that been spent?
The what?
That has not been spent?
That has not been spent.
Has not been spent?
No.
How about the engineering?
The engineering has been spent, and that was roughly $21,000 for the lights.
So with the engineering done, and the, our costs on lighting, we're, we're at 67,000, $68,000?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Oh, plus easements.
What's the easements cost?
Uh, they were about $6,000, I believe.
Do you wanna come up, uh, Mr. Scheider-Mantle, and up to the podium? I have an idea you might have the opportunity to help us out.
Mayor, Council, I'm Robert Scheider-Mantle, with YDOT in Riverton here, Principal Engineer.
Robert, what's the cost of easements?
The current cost of easements that we have to date is $6,205.
Is this, is the city gonna pay for that?
Yes.
So it's 6,000?
Two oh five.
Two oh five, thank you. Is there any other costs that are associated to lights?
Not at this time.
So $74,000 approximately? And how many lights are on? Is there seven or fourteen? I'm confused.
The CSA money, context-sensitive amenities money, is gonna pay for seven. The TEO grant will pay for the rest.
And the rest? And the rest is, what's the total number, lights?
I am not sure, I'll have to look at the agreement.
I believe it's twenty-four.
Thank you. Okay.
Any other comments? Yes, Councilman.
You said that TEO grant would pay for the rest?
Yeah, there's a current TEO grant that they went for. I can look at it here.
Robert, were we required to pay something on that grant?
I think Councilman Baker is, uh, has a question. The, there is, under that portion of the grant, that's that 0.95%, if I'm not mistaken.
9.51%?
9.51%. So the state pays for ninety percent roughly, and you guys pay for ten roughly, of the remaining lights. Context-sensitive amenity money is paid in full for the seven, from YDOT, or federal funds.
Your Honor.
I'm sorry, uh, Councilman Christians, I think Councilman Gard had a question.
Lars, are you done? Robert, is that, have we paid that?
No.
Nine point two percent, or nine point five percent yet?
That will be billed out to you guys as the construction project goes along.
And what does that total to?
Um, whatever the bid came in at for the lighting. I don't have the bids in front of me at the time.
The lighting bid is in, if I correct, um...
The...
Hundred and fifty-four? Hundred and fifty-four thousand, five thirty-two, and we would have 9.51% of that?
Estimated, estimated construction cost for, I believe it's the sixty-eight, is that correct, STP in 2030, sixty-eight?
Yes.
Four hundred and sixty-one thousand, two hundred and forty dollars, estimated construction. So YDOT's maximum federal aid participation is $400,000. That comes under our, the TEO grant, if I'm not mistaken. YDOT's federal aid match is 0.9049%, or 501,000. You guys have Exhibit AB, if I'm not mistaken?
They don't.
They do not. Okay.
You should've gotten that email to you this afternoon with, from Stephen.
It's in a different email. What's the total?
The, the total city's match portion is 154,000. No. That's the old one, sorry.
Forty-six thousand, six hundred and fifteen.
Yeah.
We've al, we can't add that in twice.
Pardon?
We can't add that in twice, we already have it in the equation.
Your Honor, I believe with the TEO grant and with all the funding that we have, what the city will have to pay with their 9.51% is the 46,615 that we've discussed. And then we will have the, we've already paid out the 21,000 in engineering costs, those have already been paid to the engineer. And then this, we will also owe YDOT the easements of 6205.
Thank you. So the total for lights, we're right at 74,000?
Correct.
Thank you.
Your, Your Honor?
Yes, Councilman Baker.
The reason for my initial confusion here is that, is that in the discussion that came out with, you know, in the packet, it says that this project is, is 663,520 over bid, or, or over our budget. Okay? And so then, I, so then I look at the spreadsheet, and I can't find that. Okay? I don't know where that number comes from and how we make that up. And then, and then we, we have here, we've saved by, by moving things into the next fiscal year, we can kinda scavenge $188,000, and that leaves us with the $475,000 that I don't know how we're gonna pay for. And so, that was my concern, was I just wanted to know how we were gonna pay for this, uh, you know, with the funds that we had, because it seemed to me like when we budgeted, we had about $80,000 left over, right? That was discretionary. And we gave forty of that away to the skate park, I think. So, so that's, that's where I'm kinda struggling with this, and so now what it comes down to is, it doesn't seem like the numbers that we're getting here add up to that difference. I, I'm not, I'm not sure. I don't know how to understand it, that's my problem, I'm sorry.
Well, Your Honor, if, if you start on this, this plan, so up at the top, the only ones we're really focused on is South Federal right now. So for South Federal and the general fund, we're 144,366 short.
Okay.
So that's the short part. And then, as you go down into the water fund, you can see the extra 171,361 that we needed additional for the South Federal, that was added in the overage. That has been absorbed because of other projects that have been appropriated to the next fiscal year. So like the Big Bend ditch right there, there was 103,370, so we're not doing that. So that's been made up in, in the water fund. And so, really, in the water fund, we're $77,000 in the good. The sewer fund, um, we're 171,361 short. And, uh, we're proposing a couple of these appropriate in fiscal year fifteen that you could see highlighted there, along with overage of that sewer jet. So, and then, we're, we're, we're short 21,396. We're proposing that number, along with 100,000, um, 120,000 for the storm sewer, be paid for by 1% funds. Because originally, that 636,000 was reduced by over 100,000, because YDOT had failed to put the, the proper amount in there, so that 600 immediately went down to 555.
I sat in a meeting, um, this afternoon, uh, actually this morning at 10 o'clock for, uh, over an hour, and, uh, Gloria and Courtney and Dawn and Stephen cranked through all the numbers, and I'm still not sure I understand it all myself, and that's my limitation, not theirs. But I just have a great deal of confidence in our staff that, uh, the information that they're giving us is, is correct. The one thing that I feel very strongly about, I worked very hard on the 1% monies, and I wanna make darn sure that everyone understands that the 1% monies will be used only for storm sewer and sewer, uh, projects, that they are not being used for decorative lights or anything else. And so I think that's a critical, uh, thing that the public be aware of. And I think that's an entirely appropriate use of those monies. We are going to have to go to the 1% committee and receive their approval for that, so that's still a little, um, iffy there, but, but I have confidence that they've been very supportive of what we've tried to do in the past, and I think they'll work with us on it, so. But this is a, a very important project for the City of Riverton, and I know, uh, YDOT's worked hard on it, and, and, um, you know, these kinda things are, uh, while you don't enjoy them when you're going through them, you can anticipate that there will be something like this that you're gonna have to deal with. So, um, I, I appreciate the staff putting this, uh, highlighted, uh, together, it makes a lot more sense, uh, this evening than it did this morning. But, um, are there any other comments? Any, yes, Councilman Smith?
So, trying to balance between the, the packet, the budget impact, and the 475 short that Lars talked about, and the new sheet here, that we're not that much short. At the end of the day, how much are we still short? What's the bottom line? That we don't know at this point in time where it's coming from. Because with the packet, we were at 475, that we didn't know where it's coming from, but we've adjusted some projects. So now, at the end of the day, how much are we short?
Your Honor?
Yes.
I know this is very confusing, but this is not any different than we conduct our business daily. The only thing different is we're being very, very transparent because of a project that is not driven by the city. This is a project that is driven by YDOT. So, I guess at this point, I feel that, um, this isn't the time to negotiate the lighting, and I, I don't mean that as any disrespect to you, Councilman Gard, at all, not at all. When we put this budget together, we put it on estimates only, on these projects, we don't have anything else to go on. So when a bid comes in at 600,000 over, we've gotta find the money someplace, especially with signed agreements in place. So that's what we did. We have moved some projects, and believe me, you know Mr. Urbikite, his mind's going 100% an hour, all the time. We have moved things several times. We have delayed projects for three and four years. We've had projects that we budgeted for one year and had to carry over year after year after year. And there's a perfect example of that with, uh, retainage just being paid on North Broadway Extension. I told the auditors that project is done, and we get a retainage bill in for 96,000. So there's just, those timing issues are something that we just can't control from a financial perspective. And you will be seeing, I promise you, you'll be seeing a lot more spreadsheets like this because this is exactly what the auditors have requested that we do, so you as elected officials know where the money is. The only thing about this is this is one of three projects that are driven by YDOT. Our cash flow is gonna be critical, and so for us to hold back on projects is something that's just gotta be done. You'll be approving a 1.3 million dollar claim this month for the Riverton Water Supply Project. That's a city-driven project, but again, that was in on estimates and bids, and we're gonna keep you apprised of what's happening with that, the same thing that we're gonna be doing on these projects. So, that's my two cents, Councilman Gard.
Thank you very much, Courtney, appreciate it.
Your Honor?
Councilman Gard.
I, I just wanted to point out, I don't, I'm not trying to renegotiate or stop this. What I'm trying to point out, so people understand this, when we flip this over to North Federal, we spent $74,000 on South Federal for four blocks. When we flip it over onto North Federal, we're gonna spend close to $300,000. And our decorative lights, that important to you, that we have now close to $400,000 in, in, going to be invested in, we could buy our entire skate park for what we have in lights. And I just want that to be transparent. You want transparent, I do too. And it, we have a spending problem, not a revenue problem in America. We spend, 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 and never worry about where the money's coming from. This is the problem. And until we get, and we've been led to that. And until we get, and we've been led down this road. And, and your point is well taken, that it's an estimate that we do all of our groundwork on, and then we get the bids in and we add 43,000 dollars to it. It's frustrating from where we sit, I mean, no, it's frustrating from where you sit, to, to propose that we watch the funds that are spent and yet it appears that we don't. And so I, I just want people, as they go by, to formulate the 375,000 dollars on the beautiful lights we have compared to a skate park that we could have. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Guard. I think we all have personal agendas of what's important, um, you know, for our community. And I think that's what gives us the strength of the diversity of having this discussion. And, and I don't think there probably will be unanimity. Uh, I can remember when I was on the council in 2000, um, one of the reasons that I got on was that, that there's a valley pan up there on 8th Street that every winter is just a disaster. Okay, now that was in 2000. And that one is one of these projects that gets set back every year. And here it is 13 years later and it's still set back. Okay? And that's what we're doing with a lot of these very needed projects, that they're being set back. And a lot of this stuff is being driven by our good neighbors, YDOT. And we appreciate everything that you do, Robert and whatnot, but, but these projects have a, have a serious and significant impact on our municipal budgets. And we understand that when a bid comes in and it comes in over, you have no control over it. And, you know, we've got hundreds of thousands of dollars in design costs already built into it. You can't walk away from it. It's not going away. And so we, we just have to, to, uh, uh, buck it up and smile at each other and do the very best we can to make it work and, um, uh, keep the things that are important to us and, and, um, you know, I guess set the things that aren't quite as important, uh, down the road a little bit farther. But, um, it's, um, it is difficult. I agree. And Courtney is right on the firing line. They're the ones that have to, to come up with these numbers, defend these positions and whatnot. And let me tell you, it's not easy. And she and her staff just does an outstanding job at it. So, um, at any rate, uh, is there anyone else who would want to comment? Councilman Christensen, I think you had a question a few minutes ago.
Thank you, your honor. It was answered during that discussion. So, thanks.
So, your honor?
Okay.
How much are we going to ask for out of the 1% money?
Your honor? 140,000.
140?
She's adding it up right now.
Put it over here and I forgot how to add.
Kill the goose.
How much are we going to ask?
Yeah, 140,000.
Spending 46,615 for lighting out of the general fund?
Yeah, and that will be, that will be next fiscal year. So we won't have to take that out of this budget because they won't be put in until August or September of next year.
I see, I see.
So we'll budget for that.
Okay. So we're not, we're not spending any cash reserve in order to make this work. Transferring funds out of cash, out of our reserves to make this work.
Thank you.
No.
Thank you. Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Is there further discussion or have we? Uh, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Opposed?
No, no.
Okay, the motion carries. Uh, agenda item number 13 is council committee reports and council members roundtable. Councilman Smith, would you lead off please?
Nothing further tonight, your honor.
Okay. Councilman Fabian, are you still with us? Okay, thank you for calling in this evening. Okay, Councilman Guard?
I don't have anything to add. Thank you, your honor.
And Councilman Heiser?
Uh, yes, your honor, a couple of things tonight. First, um, I'll let, uh, Councilman Baker talk about rec board because I was with Councilman Guard last night at the CWC basketball game announcing and got to see a three-quarter court shot go in at the buzzer for the wrestlers to win. So, um, I'll take that one and, uh, let Councilman Baker, um, share the report from last night. Lastly, uh, probably the worst kept secret in the world, um, I'm going to be resigning my seat, uh, for the Riverton City Council, uh, effective December 31st of this year. I've, uh, taken a position with Salt Lake Community College as an associate dean and will start there at the beginning of the year. And that is, uh, obviously necessitating a move for my family and I to Utah. So, uh, that will, uh, obviously mean that I have to, uh, leave the council. So, um, just wanted to make that official this evening. I want to thank all of my constituents, uh, who voted for me, uh, the past two elections. The confidence that they've shown on, uh, shown in me is, uh, means a lot. And it also, uh, uh, I, I know the responsibility that comes with it. If there's, uh, one regret that I have, it's the fact that I'm not going to be able to serve out the term. I had a, will have a year left on this term and unfortunately, um, the council will have to, uh, declare a vacancy and appoint someone, uh, for that year. But, uh, sometimes these opportunities in life present themselves and, um, you have to jump at them. So, um, it's bittersweet news. Uh, it's, it's tough to leave the state that you grew up in and, uh, always be from Wyoming, always be a Wyomingite. I told, uh, someone yesterday, uh, we, uh, checked out our house on Saturday in, uh, the West Jordan area and there's plenty of Utes, flags and signs. And so my brown and gold sign will be coming with me.
It's going to stand out.
And, uh, it will be in the yard the day that we move in. So, uh, as to not confuse my allegiances, uh, but, uh, in all seriousness, I do want to thank the community. It's been, um, a tremendous pleasure to serve you. I hope that, uh, I've, uh, achieved your, uh, expectations and, uh, I wish you the best of luck going forward. And I know that, uh, the staff that we have in the current council will do, uh, the best that they can for the citizens of the city of Riverton. So, thank you, your honor.
Thank you, Councilman Heiser. Councilman Christensen?
Yes, your honor. Few little community notices. Some people approached me about, hey, we all know that the VFW unfortunately is for sale, the old building, but I want to let everybody know that there is a, uh, new veterans' hall. It is, uh, it will be replacing the old building. Uh, it's called a veterans' hall now, be simply because it will be, uh, it'll be dressing all enlisted people. It's not just for, uh, veterans of foreign wars. Uh, the, the office will be at 611 East Main, which is, well, if you go back as far as I, the old Pomida. But it's now the, uh, beauty school and all that. So, uh, it will be in there. Their goal is to be open Monday through Friday, 9:00 to 1:00. Uh, but the message can be leave, uh, left at a, a, a phone number, which is 463-0963. If anybody needs that, I'm hoping they will post something on Channel 11 so everybody knows that that is out there. They will provide and do the best they can for any, uh, uh, service member that's currently, uh, in the service or honorably discharged. So that's a nice thing. I appreciate all the things that they do do. So, uh, the next thing I'd like to, uh, talk about, I was honored to go over and volunteer on, uh, the 27th of November at the Thanksgiving dinner at the park for the homeless and their families that are going to join them. It was great. Uh, the chief was there with his, uh, officers. There was approximately 150 people fed that day and everybody chipped in. Winter clothes were provided to those that needed them and there was a lot that needed them. I don't know who gave what and who donated what, but, uh, just, it was a great turnout. They had so mu, so many things, even though it's sad to think that people need to, uh, have those to, uh, survive in this community. Music was provided. There was a drum group and I do apologize for not getting their name. It is the group that, uh, encompasses, uh, Allison Sage and, uh, Mr. Elk, I think is his name. They did a wonderful job, uh, provided music throughout the whole celebration. The event was sponsored by some, uh, great community people. One of them would be the Wind River Reservation. VOA was involved. The homeless shelter, Walmart was there in force. Riverton Hospital, uh, which Mr. Arion and then Dana, I can't remember Dana's last name, they came. And I'm sure some other members from the hospital. And that doesn't even come close to touching on the donations of a lot of business people that showed up with donations of food and whatnot. I recognized a lot of business owners when I'm, and, uh, I'm sorry, I don't remember everyone. Uh, I'd like to thank the Parks Department. Robert and his coworker, who I did not know his name, did a great job. He, they were so accommodating to everyone. I did want to say, there was a few highlights. There was a dancer there and her name was Maggie Hutchinson. I want to say, if I hope she's watching or her family's watching, she did a magnificent job of dancing. This woman was so talented. So that was a highlight for me. There was a gentleman in the green chili that that gentleman made in the line. Oh, it was fantastic. But the one thing I appreciated the most was that the, the true spirit of Thanksgiving and the camaraderie of the people that were there is truly amazing. It made my whole Thanksgiving, haven't had that feeling in many, many years or, you know, I can't remember when I did. And I, uh, I'm just so happy that I was involved at that. So I appreciate, uh, all the people that were there. I, the one thing that keeps rolling over in my mind, we talk about relations with, uh, gaining relations with the, uh, Wind River Reservation. That's one heck of a way to do it. I, uh, that was, I met some really nice people. So, uh, I hope everybody gets involved next year and, uh, everybody did a great job. All those people, Dana and Mr. Aragon and all of them were just fantastic. Down to official business. Uh, November 21st, we had JAVIATION. They're hired by the city to work, uh, to, to help design some of the projects at the airport. They met with the staff and they gave us a really great overview of the capital improvement plan for up there. And I think everybody came away with some vast knowledge of, uh, how that's all acquired. I would have never thought what those people have to go through to get that funding. Pretty amazing. Uh, the next day, we did have a airport board meeting and, uh, some issues that were brought up were, uh, there continues to be some flight delays. There are, uh, communication problems. And, uh, uh, they just talk about it over and over. JAVIATION talked about it in our meeting on the 21st. You know, some of those regulations are beyond their control, uh, the pilot, the co-pilot regulations and the hours. Uh, the communication piece of it, I just want the community to know that the airport board is addressing these problems. They are actively addressing all this, uh, including the pilot, co-pilot regulation. This is, and that's federal. They are, uh, uh, trying to work with everyone to make this community better, their airport better and that service better. Let's see. Though, the one thing that impressed me was, uh, we continue to have over 10,000 arrivals and departures, which allows us to continue to have all these great projects. They have them mapped out for many years, but that money is, uh, uh, given to us because we have that 10,000 arrivals and departures. There's a lot of people out there helping us. One of them would be, uh, uh, Past Mayor Vincent. He's on the, uh, State Aeronautics Board. He's a, uh, he's pushing for, he's pulling for us up, up there for the funds. So, uh, and how important the airport is. I, I really appreciate being on that committee. It makes sense to me what's going on and how important that is for this community. I hope it continues to flourish and, uh, I, uh, for a kind of a gal that's afraid to fly. But, uh, they do a great job and, uh, I hope everybody will, uh, continue to use our airport when they, when, when they can. There are some situations where they can't. So please, uh, please let us know if there's any problems and, uh, we'll continue on. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Baker.
Your honor, I, um, why, Councilman Heiser passed this rec board meeting on to me and I responded with my email that I would be there. And, um, last night at about 7:45, while I was doing KP, we had, we had a wonderful Thanksgiving. I, my house was absolutely full. And, uh, so at about 7:45 last night, when I was doing KP, I said, oh, rec board. And so they were long gone by then. And so I really can't report on what they were able to accomplish. I do know that they had the skate, uh, skaters on the agenda for, uh, for the meeting, uh, but I, I really don't know what the outcome of that was. Um, I, I see that, um, we will have a, uh, a, a meeting, um, uh, with regards to liquor dealers, uh, liquor stores in town, December the 12th. So that'll be next week, uh, uh, dealing with the, the points system that, uh, injury prevention is trying to put into place. I'm still trying to get my head wrapped around that exactly to see how that would work. But their idea is to try to come up with some kind of an objective way of, of awarding points or, or subtracting points from, from a liquor dealer based upon, um, uh, various, uh, things such as whether or not their employees are all tips trained or, uh, whether or not they've gone through the training from the liquor commission and that type of thing. And that might give the council some tools to work with, objective tools to work with with regards to, uh, monitoring and, uh, regulating our liquor licenses, uh, in the community. And, uh, so, uh, I go to those meetings and I'm interested in them and, uh, and I, and I volunteered to take tips training. And, uh, and so I've only missed the last four classes because, but, but I, I keep trying to, I keep trying to get there, uh, but I'm not getting, I'm not getting notified very far in advance. And every time that they've done it so far, I've been out of town somewhere. So, um, that's a little struggle. And then the, uh, Center of Hope is, um, uh, going to have a, a meeting here. They were, uh, that's coming up, but the, I think the big issue, uh, from our last one that we had, um, on October, uh, was a discussion about a, a little project that they hoped to put together with the city of Riverton called, um, uh, bowl, bowl of, uh, why, why can't I remember that right now? That has?
They're going to be selling bowls of soup as I call it.
Yeah, and, and what, but what do they call it? The empty bowl, empty bowl?
I think that's right.
Okay, at any, at any rate, the idea is that, is that they, they'll have an open house. We think we'll maybe get the armory for that. And, and then people from the community will go there and actually purchase a bowl. Uh, we hope to have those bowls made by the, um, uh, crafts classes at the high school and the college, that type of thing, so that they would be unique in some way. Uh, you could come in and purchase your bowl for a certain amount of money. And then, and then it'll be set up kind of like a soup kitchen so that lots of different groups and organizations will be providing a meal, but it's a simple meal. It's some, it's some soup. And the idea is a fundraiser and then there's silent auction items and that type of thing, which would, uh, put together money for homeless support in the city of Riverton. And, um, and so it sounded like a, kind of a fun thing that they were going to put together and, uh, try to make that work. And I was, uh, so I was, um, uh, kind of, kind of, yeah, empty bowl fundraiser is what they call them. So they're shooting for Thursday, April the 24th. And we've kind of looked at all the calendars, um, to see if there's no conflicts, uh, and no other big fundraisers in that time period. So, um, they're hopeful that this would generate some, some funding. And so far they've got support from the casino, uh, and, um, and their, and a number of other corporate sponsors. And they hope that some, you know, larger corporations might kick in some funds. might kick in some funds for that. So, um, the, uh, the thing that I'm most impressed about with them is that the, uh, the kind of revolving door situation there has kind of come to an end, and, uh, they've, I think if I get it right, they've got eight people who are actually in some kind of a treatment program, uh, today, and that takes eight of those folks out of the system, and then there's another group of folks that don't get to go at all anymore, and so, uh, that I think is kind of a pressure on, on the city PD and the, and the jail system to, uh, to deal with those guys. And, uh, and so those are, those are my reports, Your Honor.
Thank you. City Administrator's Report, please.
Yes, Your Honor, uh, we have currently one item on for our work session next week. Since they passed some new legislation on old landfills, thought we'd, uh, have a discussion about that. We're going to have Steve Molt, um, from Inberg Miller come and talk to us about what the city's responsibility is. I think initially we thought that everyone's going, everything's going to be turned over to the state, and we're going to be able to wash our hands of that old landfill, but I don't think that's the case, um, but he'll come and fill us in on that, so be prepared to have lots of questions about the old landfill. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I really don't have, um, anything this evening. Um, I see that we're, uh, getting some drilling down on the four twenty-two, uh, Main Street property, um, that EQ is down there doing some more soil testing and, and, uh, what, I see we have a, a letter in the paper the other night, um, regarding that issue, and, um, I've taken the liberty of responding to it. It hasn't shown up in the paper yet, but, uh, at any rate, it's, um, maybe some, we'll get some closure there. We had a wonderful Thanksgiving at our home, we had six grandchildren and four additional adults and two dogs, and it was pretty wild around there for a while, so, um, I am not looking forward to the cold weather this, uh, this week, but I guess it goes with the territory that we live in, so, um, drive careful, that's all I can suggest, and there's some of those intersections out there are pretty slick, so. It's my understanding that this evening we're having a executive session for potential litigation. The chair would entertain a motion to, uh, convene into executive session for the purpose of litigation, considering litigation to which our governing body is or may be a party in accordance with Wyoming Statute sixteen dash four dash four oh five A-I-I-I.
I would move to go into executive session for the purpose of potential litigation.
Second.
It's been moved in second, it is their discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Regular session?
I'd make a motion to reconvene.
Second.
It's been moved in second, and all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. And there is no action that we need to take on the executive session, and so the chair would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, second.
It's been moved in second, and all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.